I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
How are you?
Good.
Night course.
Hmm, I know summer's here.
Yeah.
Pretty wild season, huh?
Yeah, so you put the fan in for us.
Well, we need to have a fan, you know, Pollet's biggest fan over there.
The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment. But the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and are available for everyone to review. Thank you.
Alright, so welcome, everybody. I'm Kristen, and members of attendance tonight, we have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Jessica Van Orte, Tom Collard, and Rich is not going to be here, so no Rich tonight. Um, I've gotten everybody who's here and on the attendance sheet. So Mike is our chair, so questions or comments are directed to Mike. And then just a highlight point, so anybody that has not pre-requested to be on the agenda has two minutes on any given comment, or, sorry, two minutes on any given topic. We have our microphone tonight, which is connected with Peg TV, which is where we are being broadcasted to, so if you are speaking any public comment, you can just make sure to grab the microphone. Friendly reminder, you won't hear yourself projecting, it's just so that you can be heard more clearly through the Peg TV broadcast. A couple of additions this evening, so we have an executive session this evening with our zoning administrator to discuss a grievance. There's also, um, under our facilities report, along with the continuation of the door, there's a town hall slate repair topic. We have received a couple of grant awards for the highway department, which can be discussed within the highway report. And then I wasn't sure if Mike or the rest of the board, if you wanted to address tonight that Tier 1B municipal resolution after the special meeting from last week from Devin Neary, or if we wanted to... That's due in July, so, um...
I guess let's kind of go and see how the, if everybody's in favor of new business, and see what point in the evening and...
There was an email that came along, which I had sent, and then I resent it tonight, so it was at the top of your email. Um, and it was pretty much just a follow-up from the special meeting after everything that was discussed. And so it was about that concept of whether or not we wanted to opt into the Tier 1B, which would allow us to essentially maintain certain zoning regulations as they are now, which is currently under a point of like, there's exceptions currently. So, anyway, we can come to it, and if we'd like to talk about it tonight, we can, or if not, I can kick it down to the next time, but we do just have to address it.
Keep it, yeah, keep it on there. We'll see if we have, if tonight, time-wise allows for, yeah, under new business, I think we could, probably all of us are informed enough, so we could probably make the difference.
Um, and I don't believe there are any necessary deletions, so the minutes that need approval are from our last two meetings, which were both on April 29th, the regular and the special meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting, and do you want to do the two separate?
We do them together.
Okay, and also the special meeting?
Thank you.
As written?
I'll second that. Thanks.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
I have, there are no pre-requested, and I have no announcements.
Zoning administrator.
Can I have an announcement?
Oh, yes, Jessica has one.
Yes, um, so, a group, a small group of people that I'm involved with is putting together a community garden here in Pollet at 504, um, Route 133. That's a property owned by Mike Robinson. It's right by Flower Grove. So, um, just letting folks know that if anybody's interested in planting in that garden, or has any tall chicken wire or plant starts they want to donate, um, you can contact me. My email is on the, um, Town of Pollet page.
Where's that address again?
Uh, 504.
Route 30?
Route, Route 133.
133.
It's my right side neighbor, Mike.
Oh, gotcha. I'm with you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, we went over there today and just, you know, started to put up posts.
So, the library has seen it's also for free.
Yeah, that one's great. Excellent, thank you.
Is that it for announcements? Zoning administrator.
No, I do not. So only two things to report, and that is, May 8th, I attended the open meeting log presentation presented by Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And Mike, you have a copy of the latest log, which has 15 permits year-to-date. And there's also, the log is always posted on the board back here, too, if anybody's curious.
I believe I shared that yesterday, I tell you. Anybody have any questions for Nancy?
You sent the question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought I shared it last night. That's, that's the most current. Planning Commission.
Uh, yes, several things.
Oh, yes, you do need that, Mike.
So we attended the, uh, open meeting law training. Frank was there in person. Linda and I and Nancy were, uh, remote on teams. You were there?
In person.
Sorry to mention you.
What's the key word?
What's the key word? Stay away from icky.
Yeah.
That's my title, icky.
Uh, it was great training. Recommend anybody that hadn't had a chance to attend that, to go in and take that. Uh, one aspect that we focused around was non-advisory and advisory committees with reference to the PPC. And, uh, they made the statement that we needed to read, to, uh, have a read from that, from our local town attorney, because all towns, uh, kind of have different structure of their boards and whatnot. Uh, Nancy was kind enough to reach out to Merrill, uh, and Merrill stated that basically because we don't actually approve anything, we have the, the DRB that does that. Uh, we are purely an advisory group, so we fall into that definition for our legal requirements for recording meetings, et cetera. The meeting for the 26th was canceled because Monday is the holiday. Uh, we're also going to look at the future calendar. Frank had recommended that, so we're going to look at the future calendar year, see if we have any conflicts in our holiday schedule for the PPC. And then the last item is, um, we're going to obtain the energy plan from the RRPC. Uh, and Jessica, I think it's Jeremy is our contact there, or I don't mean to put you on the spot. But if you could send me the contact? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, let me get you, I, I think it's Jeremy, but let me double-check my emails and send you the contact.
Thanks so much, and that does it for us.
Anybody have any questions? Do I play any questions?
I do. If you've, anyone that was attending the meeting, get the follow-up, all the slides. I have not seen them, and I made a note on my phone today to remind me is... So, I haven't missed the email, then?
No, I haven't received that either. I was in communication with the, with the government, because I was on a working group.
On a working group up, that meets with the Secretary of State. That's part of the statute, that they're supposed to get together and review it.
Yep.
And they have a bunch of things they're going through. There'll be more to come on it. But they're going to be sending out supposedly the entire slides from that presentation, uh, to PowerPoint. So that isn't out yet. I haven't seen it, and nobody else on the board, on that working group has seen it yet either, and they requested it. And so this will be, Legal Cities and Towns is represented on the board, so the Secretary of State and Legal Cities and Towns will probably be arriving at a consensus, I think, at some point on what they were discussing on it.
Yeah, because I was under the impression that Maggie, was it Maggie O'Brien?
Yeah.
Was going to forward that out after the...
Oh, that meeting, yeah, that video. Right, I haven't seen that one.
The PowerPoint, yeah. The PowerPoint, we didn't get through the whole thing.
Right, right. It's supposed to be going out to, like, more people than just us.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Road Foreman.
Alright, well, first and foremost, we have our new road foreman, James Greeno is here with us tonight.
Hi, James, nice to meet you.
So, welcome to James, and he's here to give an in-person highway report tonight.
He still has the microphone.
Microphone, please.
And you got the microphone and everything.
Hi, so, uh, we completed our, um, beginning the season grading. That's all done, completed. Um, also, we, we, we went right into shoulders, cutting them, and then into ditching. Uh, Tadmere Road, we finished up today, and then we'll be going on to White Hill Road. And then we have a couple of critical, um, culvert projects that would be good for the grants we had gotten, so that's where we're at right now. If there's any questions of anything I said right now, I'll take them if you need them. Any clarification?
Which, um, culverts?
So, Dambie-Pollet Road, uh, 1298 up there, that one's undersized and rotten out. And then, uh, Route 153, West Pollet, uh, 617 is the, uh, closest co, uh, fiscal address to it. It's undersized, it's, uh, through pavement. So that's what we'll be working on.
Where, where is it closest to James?
Uh, the house number I got was 617, uh, just this side, or, uh, West Pollet side of, uh, Chet Carp Road.
Well, thank you, and welcome, welcome to our town.
I appreciate it. Thank you for having me.
So, it was interesting, you mentioned, you mentioned, uh, shoulder work, and on the way over tonight, I was noticing that there are some spots on the blacktop that, especially around some of the corners.
Yeah.
From when I'm, the, the blacktop that I travel, that, that could be tumed in a little bit on some of the sharp corners.
Yeah, the plan was to, um, we, we... We, we will get to those, and we'll lay them with some shoulder material, so that will help the water wash off. Yes, yep.
I'm, I'm not looking for a timeframe or anything.
No, I, no, I've been talking to a lot of people, which is awesome, that, you know, trying to hear what everyone has to say, what they see, because, you know. I've only lived here since, well, Dambie, but 2018, so I'm still kind of learning. But thank you all, appreciate it.
That's great, that's great, here, join us. Anybody else have any questions for James? James or Jim, or?
Not James.
James, okay.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to share that, so we, um, have received, let's see, so we have received the Better Roads Grant, um, which is for a Better Roads category project, which is to do with our townwide road erosion inventory. And that's for $10,352. And we've also received the, uh, that is it for that. And then we've also gotten some, I believe that Julie reached out to you about participating in a different grant, which we had thought about putting in a letter of interest for. Um, do you have any recollection of that?
Is that, that was just a today, I feel, that I needed to sign?
Yes.
I thought I could sign tonight.
That might have been in relation to the Better Roads Grant.
I, I think I signed one a little bit ago. Let me check my emails, please.
That's what I'm looking for, too, but I did see one that came up about grants. Maybe it's two different things.
So I'm pretty certain that it was, who is not here? It could all be in relation to the Better Roads, so, but if that were to be the case, I know the timeline was kind of funky with that, but if that were to be the case, we did...
Is that the one, one that says four 26 grants and aid participation? It came up four days ago?
So I admittedly get quite confused, because there's grants and aid, and there's Better Roads, and they sort of, I have always had a challenging time understanding if those are the same or if they are different, because they cover very similar things, so...
Because there's a letter of intent that needed to be signed by May 23rd on that one.
Yes, which I believe was the one that Julie had, because the Better Roads is what we've just received funding for. I just want to make sure mostly that we're not missing. It was this from Jeremy?
I believe there was another one. She said there was still eligible, money-eligible.
This, this one right here.
Time-eligible to apply for it.
Can we print that? Can you print that from your phone?
Grants and aid.
If you tell me how to do it, absolutely you can.
James pointed out that it's due by 5.
I just learned how to turn it on.
I'm going to try to do it, okay.
Copy filled out here for you all to approve on Tuesday.
Alright, well, I just printed that, thank you.
I wonder where that hard copy is.
Is it there on your?
Maybe it's with the, um...
Oh, wait, here you go.
There's also a letter of engagement for the auditors, too.
Yeah, okay, so this is all...
I'll see your Ogden over there.
I love paperwork so much, I just don't want anyone to have it. Okay, so this must be...
Sure, teach me how to print it. That was pretty cool.
Magic, right?
This is why you guys keep me around, because I know I'm spiffy.
I am definitely trainable.
No doubt about it, we're keeping you.
Okay, so it's the same. Well, now I've just printed it, so we have extra copies, but that's to come up in the treasures report. So, something to look forward to. Hold on to your seat. Okay, well, then in that case, I guess that's all I have to say. Oh, actually, it's not all I have to say.
What's the, the bridge standards, is that?
That's what I, yes. So, we have, which is part of the annual, annual paperwork for V-Trans. It is just a certification saying that we have reviewed, understand, and comply with the town road and bridge standards slash public works, works specifications and standards passed and adopted by the select board on our meeting date. We have, we further certify that our adopted standards, standards do or do not, we can check the box, meet or exceed the minimum requirements included in the June 5th, 2019 state-approved template. And we further certify that we do or do not have an up-to-date highway network inventory, which identifies location size deficiency slash conditions of roads, bridges, bridges, causeways, culverts, and highway-related retaining wells on Class 1, 2, and 3 town highways and estimated cost of repair. So this is an annual thing, it's the same thing that we have. A lot of this inventory is kept on state websites. So, this is just something, though, that we need to have, um, submitted back to V-Trans, so I need to...
Basically, so that we, we play by their rules.
Um, yeah, essentially, yeah, and it helps to make sure that we are eligible for funding. This helps, so this needs to be signed. This is also, I mean, this is a copy of the road and bridge standards.
And this is, I guess, the copy of them?
That's the copy of the standard, so it's the same, they were the same ones since 2019, so...
And I'll second that question.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
That's still coming.
Here comes back.
Anything from the assessors?
There was something for the assessors.
There was an email from the assessors. There was an email that came in from Lisa, I know, just sharing that Lisa was required to do a municipal ethics training, um, in Pitt, in Pittsburgh for their policy for all department heads for the state-required training. It's just an FYI, Pollet will not require it. If we're in the process of it, it is not a very complicated or time-consuming thing, it's just pretty obvious stuff about ethics. So Lisa's just letting us know that she participated in that. And I don't think... I don't think there's anything else unless I've missed it, but... Nothing, nothing that's jumping to my mind that is necessary to report.
Up to the town floor.
Deb, would you like to do yours?
Hey, Eric. Good evening, everyone. Um, the only things that I have are what's on the memo. Um, there was a third-class commercial kitchen catering license, um, and a first-class commercial caterer, both for a Haystack Catering LLC. Um, there's an auditorium rental contract, uh, for the growing community. Um, it's, uh, a not-for-profit event, so I did not put any fees on the application. Just one excess weight permit, and, um, the FYI for you guys with regards to the, um, open land, vacant land scam, that's kind of been hitting people across the country, and, uh, pretty recently, we did have a situation in Pollet. So it's something that's happening. Uh, there's, I spoke with Chris Pritchard, who put me, we were in a three-way conversation with a gentleman from the Realtors Association in Vermont. And after that conversation, I felt very comfortable with the way it was handled in this area. There were some provisions in place to circumvent this potential fraud that was trying to happen. So, but it's something to be aware of, because people are coming into the offices more and more concerned about their vacant land, and that they're not here to monitor what is happening. So it's just a, uh, interesting read for you guys, just, just to be in the mix of all the information that's coming in. And the offices will be closed on the other day, and that's all I have, if anyone has any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Deb?
I do. It's kind of, thermostat's, air conditioner, do you, if, did you tack the... Deb, did, are you aware of how to turn the air conditioners on in the East Town Hall? And the elevators?
We have somebody come in, and there's a, a switch that gets flicked, I think. Um, I can, I can call, I don't know, maybe, um, Baker, Al, not Alex Baker, Rich Baker. I can give him a call, um, because the building is getting warm these, these days, um, and we can take the night off. I can give him a call tomorrow.
So there's nothing here that we can do ourselves by flipping the switch? I mean, we have to call electrician, is there... I guess I'm trying to get caught up to speed. Is anyone in the room or has any knowledge on it?
I've got some background on HVAC, so we take a look.
Couldn't, I could call Jake and find out. I could call Jake Williams and, and find out. He, it's got to be a very easy solution, I'm sure. He's done the work on the air conditioner.
The question at hand is, it's getting warm here, and Julie doesn't know, Sue was unaware, and anyone else that you spoke to, so that's why I was asking Deb if she knew. Because you said there was a book here.
I've got, um, yeah, and I put it over here on the shelf.
Okay.
Um, but I don't know how much help it's going to be.
Because it all started with, when they went upstairs a couple of weeks ago, the heat was still on.
Yes.
So I think it's something that we have to monitor within our, with our...
Um, the elevator lobbies have electronic, um, air conditioning, um, heater, thermostats, but I don't know how to, I don't know how to adjust them.
Okay.
Um, I don't know what the one downstairs, at the bottom of the stairs, that goes into the auditorium, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know how to do it. So I know where they are, but I don't know, um, how to adjust them.
Deb, you're saying that you've never been involved with turning them on and off, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, usually, I, what we've done in the past is, somebody has come in, and they go down to the basement, and, and it's just, I, I mean, for lack of a better term, I'm flicking the switch. Do you, do you have it on the pool in the room right now?
I...
No.
That might cool down a little bit, um, because I've had to, I couldn't pull mine down by putting it on the pool with my office.
Are, are you here tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be over, and I'll look into it. I just wanted to see if there was any knowledge sitting here in the room that I could pick from before I made trip over. Okay, thanks, Deb.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anything else for Deb?
So we need a motion for the two, uh, Department of Liquor and Lottery applications for the third-class commercial kitchen and first-class commercial caterer for Haystack Catering, and then, um, a motion for the auditorium rental contract.
Oh, and I can speak a little bit more to the auditorium rental contract, because it's my wife, Ruth, who's putting the DCVs together. This is the same, um, little group that was putting together that seed swap event, um, which was pretty well-attended last month. And so now it's going to be a book swap, and the only thing that's on, and a game night, like board games. But the only thing that's not on here that she wanted me to let you all know is that after people are swapping books, if there's any that people don't want, she's going to donate them to the library book sale. So, um, I'll make the motion for the, um, third-class commercial kitchen and the first-class commercial caterer for Haystack Catering LLC.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Post, carried.
And then I will move that, the event, the auditorium for the growing community event for the dates listed there.
I'll second that, too.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
I need to go back. Deb, I won't be here tomorrow. I just remembered, I'm out of town all day. So, but I'll, I'll, I'll look into it, and I'll let y'all know.
Sign these, do we? Just you, okay.
Yep.
Sorry. Yeah, leave him, go, he's sorry.
We'll get, we'll get it figured out.
Yep, we absolutely will.
Alright, town treasurer.
Alright, so from Julie, uh, there are two warrants this week. Paywell, payroll is $8,973.59. Accounts payable is $19,993.54. General fund, $14,695.05. Highway, $13,817.71. Wastewater, $454.37. Julie is seeking approval to sign the engagement letter with our auditor to begin the process. The grant agreement for the Better Backroads road inventory needs to be signed. This is for the required road inventory work that needs to be completed by October 2027. RRPC, which is the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, can help us on this, and they would like to know sooner than later if we intend to use their services. A letter of intent needs to be signed for grants and aid for fiscal year '26. I am unable to attend this or next meeting, that's Julie saying that, not me. Feel free to reach out if you need something. Have a great meeting. The Meadowey School meeting, scheduled to be in the auditorium on May 19th, has been moved...
has been moved to the school, so the auditorium is available that evening. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack. So the two motions are for payroll warrant two-five-zero-six-nine for eight thousand nine seventy-three fifty-nine and accounts payable warrant two-five-zero-seven-zero for nineteen thousand nine ninety-three fifty-four.
I'll move that we approve payroll warrant two-five-zero-six-nine and accounts payable warrant two-five-zero-seven-zero.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Code? Carried.
Okay. So the next thing is, um, this is the...
Not yet.
Letter. So Julie's wondering if we, if you all approve that to be signed.
And then will Julie sign it? Or just...
I'm sure Julie or I have to sign it.
I think she, it looks like, based on the...
Approval to sign.
Sign the engagement letter, so I think just a motion to approve Julie.
Oh, my goodness.
Not me.
So I believe the motion that Julie's looking for is to approve she signs the engagement letter with Polit's auditor to begin the process.
I'll move that we approve the signing of Julie for the engagement letter for the auditor.
All right. Bob, you were nodding your head, was that meaning that you were...
I was saying, yes, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Code? Carried.
Great. All right. Moving right along is the Better Backroads Erosion Control Road Inventory. This needs to be done by October of twenty-twenty-seven. Rutland Regional Planning Commission can work with us on this and it's for the grant money to do the inventory. So that would be all you, James. So if you... There you go. So, yeah, we should have read Julie's report before all those questions that we just got.
Went through, we would have answered it.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't have learned how to print.
You still haven't, but I will do.
I'm not leaving tonight without learning. I can guarantee you that. You're gonna become a, uh...
Your IT person.
My AI person.
AI IT?
Yep.
Do we need to make a decision about if we want RRPC to help us with this?
So it, they have, as far as my involvement with it and my understanding of it, they have all along. I think Stephanie has been quite involved with it, so...
They usually help us.
It would be nice, maybe, to, why not, if there's a motion to sign it, to just formally also extend the, or express that we'd like to have them help?
Okay, I guess I will make such a motion. Um, I move that we sign the grant agreement for the Better Backroads Road Inventory and, um, ask RRPC if we can use their services for this.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Code? Carried.
You're welcome, Bob. Anytime, jump in.
I'll have to nudge you. I'll have to nudge you the next time.
I've made quite a few in the last thirty years, so...
I got thirty years to catch you up. I'm never gonna catch you.
There's no reason to back off now, Bob. You know that the quicker you make, second the motion, the quicker the meeting gets over.
Thank you. All right, and our next thing...
The same one that you've been saying for thirty years.
Standard.
So our next item is the letter of intent to participate in the SFY twenty-twenty-six Municipal Roads Grants and Aid Program, which is due by the twenty-third. Julie has already kindly filled this all out and all that needs to be done. This is for our favorite buzzword, hydrologically-connected roadways, which I love to say that.
One more time?
Hydrologically-connected roadways.
Okay.
Come on.
I won't say that twice.
Man, good support here, don't we?
I mean...
Their TV ratings will go up.
Yeah, yeah. Through our BMPs of the MRGP, if you really wanna get, get excited. So that needs to be signed.
That's just Mike's answer on that.
Yes. He is our duly authorized representative.
I like that.
Thank you.
And that's for Julie also.
So everything that we've done with Julie's done, right?
Um, yes, I believe so.
She doesn't want to join us for a couple of weeks?
Yeah, the school board.
Really not.
School boards meeting at their own home, okay? Anything for Bob Marino?
Yes. Sorry. Uh, okay. Bob Marino submitted electronically a combined report for March and April, and he has been very busy. He has attended a State Emergency Response Committee meeting, the FBI Quarterly Working Group meeting, the Rutland Emergency Management Committee meeting, and a Vermont Local Emergency Planning Committee meeting. In addition, Bob has completed the annual update of the local emergency management plan and it has been submitted to Vermont Emergency Management for approval and the plan was approved. So way to go, Bob.
So I did reach out to Bob and I gave him your number to pass on to, uh, Washington County Fire Control who dispatches, uh, fire rescue in this area. It's over in Hudson Falls, New York.
Okay.
So if you get a call seven-four-seven number, it'll be from, it'll be them, Washington County Fire Control. And if any, uh, fire emergency or anything like that needs a real crew involvement, they will be the ones calling you, probably.
Thank you.
Okay. So I wanted to get all that information, all passed along. So he was gonna, he was gonna forward that information over there. Anything else? Yes. Health officers report. Jennifer?
Hi, um, so there's been lots going on in West Polit last week. A resident was walking her dog down, um, the sidewalk towards the post office and, um, was attacked by seven dogs who lived at one particular residence. Um, she and a woman who stopped to help her were both bitten. Um, Tom and Mark, both are constables, have been involved. So, um, I'll let them speak to their actions. Uh, none of the dogs were vaccinated or licensed. Also, our, um, person on one fifty-three with the fires, um, I was notified that there was a fire going yesterday. They had moved a lot of bags of trash from behind the house out into, um, the open behind the, or there's a red building behind the house that I think people are living in. Um, they had started a fire, um, right next to all the bags of trash with like some scrap, uh, branches, twigs. Looked like they were planning to burn the trash. Uh, Dave McCord was kind enough to go with me, um, over there and we... The homeowner was not there, it was another person who said he's living there. They, um, were notified that they cannot burn trash, that what is legal and what is not. Um, I reported it again to the state and the enforcement person. Um, but again, if the town were to pass some, uh, high laws regarding fires and trash and stuff, I would be able to write tickets, um, in such cases. So that was all I have for this week.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Jennifer?
I don't have a question for her, but maybe Tom can answer this. Isn't there a state statute about burning trash? That came out like in the nineties?
Yes. That's why the state representative's, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, the state representative has inquired from me the contact information for the homeowner. So they're gonna follow up on that, so, uh, if there's any criminal charges, then they'll get ahold of me.
Because that's usually where that leads to, if it is become guilty then.
In regards to the, uh, dog bite incident, still under investigation, so...
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Jennifer?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Jennifer, are you aware of any regulation that... I heard you say that, that one person had seven dogs. I thought there was a regulation where once you have over a certain number of dogs, you become a kennel.
Uh, that is a very good question. I'm not aware of that, but I will definitely look into that.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you for that update, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Have a good night. Facilities.
Waste water?
Oh, wastewater, yeah. According to this, facilities is next.
I'm so sorry.
You messing with them.
Do you wanna do facilities first?
It doesn't matter. Do you have the wastewater report up?
Uh, turn, I can. On my little big moment here, I have, um, the wastewater first.
'Cause we got two Js on ours.
Which one?
Ah, that's why.
J and J.
I figured it was a test.
All right, well, let's not get nitpicky here, everybody. So we can decide which one goes first because they're both the letters J.
The capital J or the lowercase j?
Okay, well, let's see.
I want you to do which, what you want to go first.
And I, and I think that's a smart idea right at the moment.
Yeah.
Let's talk about the front door.
Well, considering I, I'm having a moment of locating, oh, here you go. So the wastewater treatment facility, Jill Marsano, um, submitted a report with the usual items. Also, um, the record copies for the April twenty-twenty-five submittal were emailed. This month, they completed two days of sledge hauling. In addition, the electrical controls that were blown inside the blower cabinet were replaced and the blower function restored. This moved lots of stuck solids from the floor of the EQ tanks into the clarifiers and back to the sludge-holding tanks for final disposal. The bucket of skimmer sump pump in clarifier two died last week and they will work to get this replaced this upcoming week. And that's the story from the wastewater treatment facility.
While we're on wastewater, James, I will be passing your contact information to Jill. Jill Marsano is from Bristol, but she's the operator of, of the wastewater treatment facility there.
Okay.
So there's potential that sometimes they could need some help getting the manhole open or... And then there's a, a minimal amount of plowing that we do in the winter for them to open up around the building. Jim probably knows now.
Yeah.
Um, but just, just so you guys can work together, I'll, I'll trade your two contacts. I'll let her know that, that you're, you've joined our, our team and, and, uh, so she can have your, your number and stuff, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about the wastewater? Okay, sounds good. There.
Bob? Uh, we can start with the door.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I forwarded a quote that we received from Indian River. Oh, don't know if everyone got a chance to look at that. And, uh, he also sent a drawing, but he made some notes that if you haven't read it, we should go back and...
Here's the drawing. It's a door.
Some of the notes were, were pretty, were pretty important in there. Um, I, uh, I think being the historical building is the reason that there's quite a charge to it because of going back to be identical. Um, and also on the quote, he gave an hourly rate, um, to install because he has no clue, as the note said...
Timing material.
Timing material. So he's quoted us what it is to do the doors and then, uh, he would wanna deposit and then the balance upon completion. But then there would be the additional charge of the hourly rate, whatever time it took. He did also made a note on the windows, uh, there might be, uh, temporary window put in there versus glass while it cured. So I think those are things that, um, I thought he did a very detailed quote for us.
He was, yeah.
And, uh, very professional and I was pleased to read it rather than the price. But knowing that it's a historical building and the details that he has to do, I, I...
How did you, how did you get in contact with him?
This young lady here to my left told me there was a woodworker in West Polit.
I've got my finger.
And I just stopped, got his number and reached out to him.
When you go down over, sort of, X Street, there's on the left.
It's the Beechwood Gutswee Garage.
Oh, wow, well, geez.
Sorry, I didn't tell you that.
If you're over a hundred years old, you know that there's old sebby's there.
I always refer to it as the date in the building, so garage, so... But, uh, I, I don't know if there's a desire to have another bid, what the board's thoughts are.
Did we have any other options?
We had...
I reached out to one person, um, over Endorse It, and they had indicated that they were probably not... So I reached out to their, their furniture builder and carpenter and they had really said that a cabinet maker is what you're going to be looking at for a project like this. My husband used to work for this company that I, I reached out to and he said, my husband had said, I mean, it's been a number of years since he worked there, but he was like, "You will probably be pretty like, uh, take your breath away on the price."
What did he think about that number?
I haven't shared that with him, but he did tell me that it... Chris said that he thinks it would probably be... I, I don't think he will be surprised by that. But I can certainly ask him. I mean, Chris was, I, I told him about it and he said, "It's too bad we don't have a wood shop because it's something that he would, it would be right up his alley." And, um, but I do know from experience, like, we have some furniture in our house that he built that's not antique door replicas that are priced in, you know, they were priced in the ten-thousand-dollar range. So I think that's kind of...
It's not ridiculous.
Especially with the cost of materials now, which I think things are meant to be leveling out a bit, but material prices have gone up quite a bit for lumber.
I think that the skill set necessary to, to build that correctly is, is not a very common thing around here.
And, um, the amount he's charging per hour is very reasonable.
Yeah.
I, I thought his hourly rate was very fair.
Yeah.
I think he's...
It's less than most mechanics.
Yeah, he, uh, that part, that part was just like...
It's not like, it's not like we're, we have a lot of options.
And so just to, what the next, if we do decide to accept his bid, the next, in order to comply with the historical preservation folks, I've been in contact with Meg about this. We, he would need to draw up, and he's willing to do this, a detailed, um, he would do, wanna do it hand-drawn. A detailed, hand-drawn, um, picture of what he would do for the doors, including all the little details and things that he would do. And then would send that to Meg. And, oh, probably along with his, um, this detailed description that he's given us. Um, and then she would okay it, basically, make sure that it was all right. And I would honestly, I, given his, when we, when Tom and I spoke to him, given his level of detail and everything, I might wanna even just put him in touch with Meg carefully.
Pick up that third party?
Yeah, so that, so that he, 'cause he had questions about like the fittings and things on the door and she would definitely be able to...
Right, there's no need for us to interpret the information going back and forth.
So I would want to, um, get him in touch with her.
Dude, I mean, it, like you say, it's, it's gonna be over a ten-thousand-dollar project by the time... Dude, I mean, it, like you say, it's, it's gonna be over a ten thousand dollar project by the time we're done. However, the door has been an issue for probably as long as I've been on the board. It sticks, or it doesn't shut good, and it leaks, and.
And, and in the past winter, I think it's the biggest storm of this building, so.
And this is, um, this is why we keep a fund for, well, I think we call it capital to projects now, but for repairing buildings, and, yeah, we have money.
For these type of circumstances, when something comes in, that's not.
And I think the opportunity to support somebody in our community who's then also going to be doing something for the community of which they live is nice as well.
Yeah.
I mean, for whatever that's worth, I think.
You guys willing to make a motion to move forward of this proposal, or?
I, I would, uh, be more than willing to, you know, say that yes, I think we should move forward and accept this proposal from Indian River. Um, the only thing that I didn't ask him for is a copy of insurance, so which I would have. I, I could let him have that tomorrow. I guess that would be the only thing, is to make sure he can provide us an insurance.
Copy of interns before he came to do the installation work.
Correct. But, uh, yeah, no, I would move that we, we approve that bid as written, knowing that the hourly rate is, is subject to be determined as, as time goes on.
The installation is gonna be time and material, so we can't, we can't lock that number down. I'm not completely re, uh, reasonable.
I'll second Tom's motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Post? Carried.
Thank you.
Oh, and Christian, it looks like someone's waiting in the, in the.
The other, uh, buildings and grounds is, uh, slate roof repair on this building here. Uh, reached out to Rudd Builders. Uh, he forwarded a proposal, uh, that I forwarded on to everybody. The only thing I did not receive from him as of, before this meeting was his insurance. He has it, he just hasn't forwarded to us. Uh, he here gave a dollar amount that he would like a half down, and then the balance on completion, but I think he is, once he gives us insurance, he's gonna be here this weekend to do it, so, as long as the weather. So, I, I think it would probably end up being just a check one time, but.
Think we can make a motion to have Tom just proceed, proceed and get the work done?
Okay, Bob made a motion to have, have Dave Armstrong, who's done some work before for us.
I was just gonna say, I would, I wonder if we have insurance.
Not current.
Okay.
You'll make sure that you have a certificate of liability.
Yeah, I, I sent him a text, tell him I need it now.
I'll, I'll second the motion. I think this is very similar to his rate from last time, actually.
It's half of what it was last time?
Was it two days last time?
Yep, must've been, must've been two days last time. Cause the number I was told was double that.
You basically blow it in for a day and, and work the whole room over and fix it. Obviously, he can see that, that issue with. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Thank you. Um, while we're here, we talked already about the ther, thermostats. Um, and then the railing. I have not been to the library, I don't, I. Or you think we're okay over there?
I've got a little, um, the front door railing, is that what you're talking about?
The email you sent me and, uh,
What did I say?
You were talking about the door handles in the library and the railing, that the railing was working out well, but it was a one-time person catching their sleeve on the door handle.
Oh, oh, yeah, those are, that, that was just the door handles, and that's, it's working out fine. And I've told everybody that works there and is there, if there's a problem with it, let me know, and we'll just take, you know, just take them off. Yeah, yeah, the, uh, I don't think there's a railing, oh, I see, they were going to the railing, that was what it was. That's, that's all fine.
Okay, excellent, cause I, I haven't been on either side.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. That's all I had for, unless you have something.
The only one that I have is an update about, might as well go under facilities, I guess. It's about the municipal energy resilience program grant, the Merck grant. Um, so, I was, I was called in, I, they, they let me know like a day in advance. Well, so I was able to come here and open the building last Friday for, um, Jeremy from the Regional Planning Commission, who's administering that grant for us, was able to get a different person from historical preservation down than who we, it's with someone named Greg from historical preservation, who had to look through both the town hall and the library to make sure that they could sign off on any of the insulation and HVAC upgrades that we will be getting through that grant. And so, um, the three of us went through the town hall and looked around at everything, and, um, basically, it was just sort of a discussion mostly between Jeremy and Greg about different options for how we could do, um, things like, um, insulation improvements and also like window improvements. They talked a good bit about things like those, um, those inserts that you could put in windows to make them warmer. Yeah, from like window dressers, because those, those would be fine with historic preservation, cause it doesn't actually change anything about the building. And they did a lot of technical talk about different caulking and things. So, it seems like it was, and then we went through the library, and then they also, while we were at the library, looked at the options for, about the ramp for the accessibility. So, it was, it was a pretty detailed walkthrough, and I think that the historical preservation guy, Greg, got all the information that he needed, and it sounds like, from what I could tell, he will probably okay pretty much everything that we would wanna do with that grant. There's might be a few things he would need more information on from the contractor when we do get a contractor. Um, and the other thing about that grant is that the Regional Planning Commission put together the RFP, and it was posted, uh, had to be posted on the town website also, so I sent it to Sean, and he should have posted it Monday. He said he would, so it should be there now.
Great.
So, is this different than the email we received talking about the Northshire window dressers?
Um, that's, it's the same program, but this would be a if we wanted to get in on it for this year's round. Um, I'm getting in on it personally for my house.
The Northshire windows is not involved in the Merck grant, right?
No, they're not.
They're just, they're just their own little gang.
So, do they complement each other then?
Well, with the grant money, if we wanted to get the window dresser inserts made for any of our windows, um, probably not the really huge ones, but if we wanted to get them made for any of our windows to improve the building's insulation, we could use the grant money for that. However, since we're not, since we're only at the request for proposal stage, and there, the window dresser program, you have to apply in the spring to have the inserts made in the fall. So, I would guess that if we did end up wanting to use some grant money for that, we would be in the twenty twenty-six rotation.
Thank you.
Greg?
Lucy Norman says that you got the square windows, it's great. You have little curved windows, there's a little challenge there.
Anything else under facilities?
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, my apology.
I was just thinking about that. I have a job for you, James. Every, every year, every year, the HVAC guy says, it would be really great if a couple of times, or maybe a little bit more often, the more often you do it, the easier it is. But, the outside pumps for the HVAC for the town hall are down behind the building here. And if you could just go down there and weed whack them every couple of weeks or once a month or something like that, just to keep them from overgrowing, cause then they get the plants and stuff all grow, and then they're not as functional as. So if you could just think about that, like, wouldn't you come down and get your paychecks or something like that?
Don't weed whack or do that. I'm twenty minutes early.
Thank you.
Jennifer Sullivan just added a note saying that FYI Vermont did not specify a number on pet number limits. So, follow up to that.
Thank you.
Facility, so we're, we're good with the facilities. Matterway School? Library, do you have a report from the library?
Yeah, Cory couldn't be here tonight, um, but she says book sale is going well, still looking for volunteers. Please contact the library if you're interested. And then there's a fundraising committee has started, and we're working on new fundraising ideas. We've approved us a soft annual appeal that will, um, go out shortly to help us close the gap in our finances for the, for this fiscal year. Uh, be on the lookout for a postcard, or feel free to drop a check off at the library. Um, there was a community meeting on four twenty-six to discuss possibilities for spending, uh, of an accessibility grant. Changing the railing, this is the front steps that we went through before, but there's a new group that's looking at it again. Um, fixing the front steps seems to be a popular consensus. We'll be doing more research on this as, um, these are changes to the building and its town property and historic preservation. Window washing scheduled to start in June. We'll be doing one side of the building each year to keep the, to keep it budget friendly. There's a chance we will be doing two sides this summer, uh, as it might overlap in two fiscal years. We'll be having a special meeting on Thursday, June fifth at six P M. to work out our timeline for hiring a director and to discuss the hiring process. The next regular meeting is Tuesday, June third at six P M.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions for the library? Thank you, Sue. Older unfinished, or are we skipping over anything?
No, you're doing a great job.
Thank you for giving me a lot.
So, older unfinished business, we have Tom Covino, policies and subgrant application agreement.
The subgrant we did last week, didn't we approve that last week?
Yes, we did.
Two weeks ago.
This is good, I'm keeping you all on your toes. Alright, policies.
But there's a addition, right?
The social media policy.
That was a po, another, one more policy and procedure.
The social media policy.
So.
Is that, is that how it's written through Vermont? Oh, I'm sorry. Vermont, Lakes of City and Town, so we're all good there? Thanks, Tom.
Does everybody had a chance to look through these?
I, I have not read that one.
You didn't read that one, but most of them.
I'm good with the rest.
I've cruised through most of them, and, uh, so. It looks like, it looks like a very good bunch of policies that we can have and say, yep, this, this is what we go by. Um, I presume at some point we'll try and get them all organized so they could maybe even be on the website or something like that, or. And there's a hard copy in there too, so, okay. Does anybody have any more questions for Tom regarding any of these policies?
I didn't, did we wanna put the social media in there even though we haven't?
I would think that probably to approve the, the group that he's presented to us would, would be in order.
Okay.
So I guess we're, at this point, we're looking. Looking for a motion. Bob made a motion that we approve the group of policies that Tom has presented to us.
I'll second him.
I'll second that motion. Is there any more discussion about these, the group of policies that we've been presented with?
Nope.
No, okay. All in favor? Post? Carried.
Did we, did, uh, was that social media part of that?
That, that will be included in the.
Included in all that, right? Is that what we said? I think I might be caught up with the emails. Slam me, girl. That was good.
Nice work.
I'm more impressed that you got them all done.
Other older unfinished business is nuisance lighting?
The nuisance lighting, I have not had an opportunity to gather any more additional information from other towns about that, which was where we had left off last time, so, um, unfortunately, I don't have, I was not able to get anything additional to all, so, if you'd like, I can try to do that for next time. But where we had left it off is to see like sort of what other towns were doing in terms of nuisance lighting policies, um, and how it was working out for them before we acted on anything.
Yeah, cause that, that sky lighting and all that.
Yeah, yep, so, I can add that.
Any other older unfinished business?
Uh, not that I have.
Okay, new business?
So, new business, I, so we have received just a couple of emails, which I think everybody has had over, it was closer to where our last meeting was. Um, there was an email from Donald Campbell of the Vermont Land Trust regarding the, what's the word that I'm looking for?
The value rack park?
The park that is going to be dismantling. Um, so that was just sort of an informative email about that, just letting everybody know that, you know, the Vermont Land Trust has appreciated the involvement from Rupert Dorset and Pollet in that park over the years, and understands the fact that the towns are, you know, no longer feeling like they're able to put in what's necessary to maintain that. So, what's gonna be happening now is that the park property is going to be moved over to the landowner, which is the leach farm, and they will be able to put that back into current use, or, you know, use, a use of their choice.
Yeah, and if I can just piggyback on that a little bit, in case anyone in the listening audience hadn't entirely followed what was going on with that. I know that we did, last year, we had a measure on the town ballot, asking if the town wanted to, um, enter into an agreement with Dorset and Rupert to maintain it, and the voters of the town were in favor of that. However, when we went to negotiate with the other towns, it turns out that Rupert was not interested after all in entering into an agreement, and since Pollet didn't wanna go it alone to maintain that, that, that kind of, that's where that went. It sort of died, so.
Okay. Letter to the select board from Peter Frenzel. So, we all read that letter, and I, I, I was, I wasn't in favor of getting on board with that, but.
That was the guy who was from Rutland, right, and was concerned about a lot of things. I mean, my thought on it was that, since this isn't one of our constituents, that him bringing forward concerns is not something that we really need to address. I mean, I do think that, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I am a select board member for everybody in our community. You know, whether they are, whatever their status and age and everything is, and would want to make sure that everyone is safe and comfortable in our town, but, yeah. But I'm not sure that we need to respond to him since he's not one of our constituents.
I agree with that.
Is there anything else under new business?
Uh, well, there was the tier one B, a municipal request, um, which I'm not sure if we'd like to talk about perhaps at the next meeting.
I mean, we do have time, though.
Now, Nancy, would your, your opinion on the tier one B?
Yeah, so, I mean, what I remember from the whole thing is that it really has to do loosening up the, um, the need to go to Act two fifty permitting for certain developments. And when I read, or when I attended that presentation, my takeaway was that there was no risk to signing on to it. But, again, I wasn't here for the presentation that they came and gave to you personally, so, you know, I don't know if they went into any more detail than what I heard that night. Again, and I had even, I read Chris Pritchard, who sits on that committee, and I asked him specifically whether or not there was any risk to signing on to it, and he said no.
That's the same thing that Davina told us, that basically, if, if we were to do something and what you had said, or to me one time, is that basically it was anything that we could possibly be covered by the sewer in West Pollet, it would just fast track any type of building development type of action.
Exactly.
In that area serviced by. in that, in that area serviced by the sewer system in West Pollitt.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't see any downside to it and on the, on these, al- albeit probably small chance that there is someone who wants to develop a property that they own, especially in the West Pollitt sewer district, you know, and put in a few buildings.
It would, it would make it easier.
Yeah, it would make it easier. And we would love to have more people onto West Pollitt. So, I, yeah, I will, I would move that we, um, ask for the, however, however we opt into the one B, that we have this.
We have to fill out a form.
Oh, we have, we have the form?
Yep, so we've got to fill out a form, which I can work on and have.
Anybody in like Rutland region heard anything negative or anybody I have? I'm just curious.
Nothing, you know, we said the other night, but basically it would, it would just kind of fast track. I mean, it really doesn't take any of the meat out of it, but it just helps speed up the process for, for an applicant.
When he spoke, I didn't hear a downside for us as a town.
No.
Did I miss something or?
No, not, not that anybody else has heard it.
Yeah, and since we, since we moved fairly basically from a one acre to a ten acre town, which eased up the act two fifty permitting for us, I feel like this is a step in that same direction to continue to ease up back two fifty permitting within those particular areas.
So, you moved it?
Yeah.
Take it?
I moved that we, that we ask for the one B. And I think it is for the West Pollitt and the Pollitt Village Center areas.
I think the biggest thing is though that the Pollitt Village Center doesn't have a septic system.
Yeah.
And that was, that was one of the downfalls of this side, but it certainly, it'll do anything it can in either of the, the village centers.
Yeah, yeah. And I, cause he was saying that, Devin was saying that, yeah, we have, the reason that we could qualify for it in Pollitt is because we have, um, soils that can, that can take septic systems.
The form is asking for, so part of the requirements, it says the municipality has requested to have the area mapped for tier one B, which we was reviewed at the meeting of Devin. Um, and then it says describe the requested tier one B areas. So, that would be the town center designations.
Which we pointed out.
I think that was it.
I don't know.
There were the village center designations?
Perhaps we should ask Devin what we should write there.
Okay. So, the next question is the municipality has adopted permanent zoning and subdivision bylaws in accordance with twenty-four V S A subsections for forty-four fourteen. So, we have.
We have done that. Nancy knows.
Unified development bylaws, yes. And then it's wondering about the zoning bylaw adoption date and the subulate, subdivision regulations adoption date. And then it's also indicating that the municipality has municipal staff, officials or contracted capacity adequate to support development review and zoning and administration in the tier one B area, which we do. So, then, yeah, that would just be for Mike to sign and then the regional plan would fill out the rest.
Yeah, and I can, yeah, I can ask them to, I can contact Devin about that if you'd be willing to.
Okay.
And get him to.
Maybe I can leave this with you?
Yeah, you can. And I'll also fill in the date for the bylaws, cause that was last year. But I don't have, know the date off the top of my head.
Great.
Thank you.
There you go.
So, did someone second that motion?
Yes, Tom did. All in, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Post? Carried.
So, I think you'll sign there.
There's a signature on the front and the back.
Okay.
Is that for you or the regional?
Rutland region.
No, that's, yeah, that's for that. Is that for us on the back?
Um, yeah, it's double sided, so front and back of that first page.
I don't see any signature on this page. Let's.
Okay, sorry. Maybe it's just the back.
Ah, that's you. That's it. I'll get it to Devin. Good.
Good, thank you.
Jessica, that date is August eighth.
August eighth. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, not August, October.
I hadn't written it down yet. October eighth. Do you happen to have the municipal plan adoption date?
I think it said it needs to be submitted to Logan Solomon, maybe? I don't know. It's, it's on there.
Uh, well, if it says, I will, I will get it to that person.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Okay. Anything else under new business?
Not for me.
Public comment?
Hello?
Hello?
There's a microphone.
Here you go. Mike, thank you. Yeah, my name's Kevin Horton. I run for Vermont State Governor. I've got a public for Freedom of Information Act public foyer for you guys. And if you don't mind, I brought Mr. Covino's records and I met Mr. Covino for the first time tonight. Wouldn't even shake my hand. I thought that was kind of odd. But, uh, I just want to review some records. You guys can look at that foyer, which are earliest and dearest. For a little while, you'll have three days to answer it. Um, but if you look at the, the documents that I just gave you, there's two documents simply under the criminal justice. Senator, do you want to look? Mr. Beecher, you specifically?
I'm talking to you. I'm, I'll look at that later.
Okay, well, we got one information, one sheet of thing here. And again, we've got a credential right off the bat. It's from the criminal justice. It says, Mr. Covino, he is absolutely certified as of April eleventh of twenty twenty-three. And if you look at your, the record from the same source, again, you'll see up here, it's confirmed down here. That's when he completed his basic training. That's when he was qualified to be a, an officer on April eleventh of twenty twenty-three. But you notice up here under his work history, you guys hired him as a constable in June of twenty twenty-two. So, again, part of that foyer is we're going to have to go back and look, because every single person that has been harassed, targeted, pulled over, ticketed, arrested, incarcerated, or hospitalized by Mr. Covino is entitled to compensation. Uh, the worst part of this, again, it's going to go back on the taxpayers, but you guys are aware of this. You guys admitted that in your October of the twenty twenty-four select board meeting. That's when Mr. Covino was asking to bring Bill Humphries back. That brings us to topic number two, is the certification. It was signed off by Mr. David Ricard here as a head constable, but it's impossible. Again, if you look here, his, his record started with the Bennington Police Department or the Bennington Sheriff back in two thousand and one. He didn't even take a psych evaluation until two thousand and thirteen. How is he a sheriff thirteen years later or thirteen years before he was an officer?
Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate your information.
I appreciate you guys. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. You have three days.
Anybody else have any public comment?
On my, the I R camera thing, either next meeting or maybe after, we've, we're not doing it tonight, cause of your.
Uh, we still have one more, one more form of business to transact, so.
Yeah, Frank has requested to be a pre-requested appearance on perhaps our next meeting to do a report based on some.
Energy coordinator report.
Energy coordinator report on the infrared cameras, so at our next meeting.
Five minutes, Frank?
It is what it is. It's energy coordinator report. It's required under statute. Just David, I can show you the statute.
Okay. Anybody else have any? Anything, Dad? Thank you all for coming.
I'll make the motion with you.
No, no, no. We have to go into executive session.
Oh, go into executive session.
To discuss a grievance with the zoning administrator. It's a grievance with the zoning administrator.
We have a second? All in favor?